Welcome to meeting for Watford Borough. My name is councillor Williamson and I'm the chairwoman of Watford Borough Council. Our mayor Peter Taylor and all other councillors for Watford unless apology has been received. We are supported today by Dana Nolan, the chief executive Liam Honsby, the monitoring officer, and Dana Nolan, chief financial officer from Democratic Service. I would like to remind all members to stand when they speak. If you wish to speak or when I ask you to vote, please raise your hand so that the officers and I can see you clearly. We have very busy agenda tonight to help me manage this meeting. If you indicate at the beginning of each item when asks, if you know you would like to speak, only turn on your microphone when I invite you to speak. When I invite member to speak, I do not expect reputation of previous speaker. I would also like to remind members that when we vote on the budget, we are required by law to have a name vote. At that point, I will ask the monitoring officer Liam to ask each member to choose how they wish to vote. Before we continue, I would just need to advise that we are not expecting any fire drill. Therefore, if the alarm sound, please follow the direction of the Democratic Service manager Sandra and leave quickly as possible and make your way outside by the fire exit. And around the pond where we will gather and make sure everyone is accountable for. Please do not use the lift. If you have any disability or problem, please speak to Democratic Service officer Sandra. Any apology councillor Clara? Thank you. Any other apologies? Thank you. Declaration of interests. I now invite the monitoring officer Liam to advise members regarding their interests on item 11.
So with regards to item 11, all members have been given a dispensation by me as the council's managing officer to consider and vote on this item under the council's code of conduct.
Thank you Liam. Do member have any interest to declare on any other item tonight? Can I ask you what interests please?
Of course. Thank you Chairwoman. I'm declaring an interest on motion number 15. I don't believe that I have a pecuniary interest, but in the interest of the debate being about the motion and not about my interest, I will leave the chamber for that item. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Jenny. I am now going to ask the monitoring officer Liam to read a statement before I ask for the minutes to be signed.
Thank you. So at the last full council meeting on 15th of October 2024, councillors considered the annual review of fees and charges. Councillor Rodriguez made a statement in which he said that councillor Khan had not raised any concerns about the timing of the fees and charges implementation in finance scrutiny committee. Councillor Rodriguez has since advised that he was referring to the specific finance scrutiny committee on the 17th of September 2024, which considered the report on the 2025-26 annual review of fees and charges. It is accepted however that councillor Khan has raised the issue previously and both councillors have committed to continue working together for the benefit of Watford residents.
Thank you Liam. Do member agree that I sign the minutes of council held on the 15th of October? Sorry, thank you. Official announcement. King's New Year's honour. I would like to congratulate all everyone across Hertfordshire who have received the King's honour. That's fabulous. Labour with locality funds. I would like to remind all councillors that their application should spend by now in February. Let's include myself. Related party transaction. I'm going to ask the monitoring officer to advise.
So yeah, just a quick note to members. There was an email that went around last week in relation to related party transactions. Thank you to those of you who sent them back already. We're required to complete this for our auditors. So if anyone hasn't been able to do that yet, if you can complete that and send it back to me, it'd be much appreciated. I've got some spare forms here if anyone would like to complete that before the end of this evening.
Thank you Liam. Voice chair of Watford Borough Council 2526 at the next meeting, I will be announcing the nomination for the 2526 voice chair of Watford. Each person nominated will need to be proposed on second. Council will then be asked to vote for their preferred candidate. The Democratic Service manager will write to all councillors shortly with further information. Mayor's report. A report of the mayor is attached to agenda. Please can you raise your hand now? Now if you would like to ask the mayor question. I will then make a note of all members who wish to ask a question and then read it out to make sure I have everybody. My pen is left. Keep your hands up so make sure we don't miss anyone. So. So I've got Amanda, Japhia and Nigel. Anyone else? Thank you. Can I ask the mayor to present his report please?
Thank you very much Chairwoman for that. I'm always happy to answer questions on any aspects of the mayor's report and anything else that affects the town. One thing I should obviously update members on, which I'm sure we are all acutely aware of. Page 10 of the agenda item talks about the reinvestment, rebuild Watford General Hospital. We had the very disappointing news last week that the government has placed Watford 24th on the list of 40 hospitals. It means that a delay of seven to nine years in that vital investment. And I know there are people in this room who work at Watford General. Anyone who visits that site knows that that investment is needed now, not in a decade's time. And so it's bitterly disappointing that Labour ministers have placed Watford so far down the list. And it means that all of us will have to wait for many, many more years until we see that vital investment.
Thank you Mayor Peter. I remind all, each question will have no longer than one minute per question. There are to be no statement or supplementary except for councillor Nigel as the leader of the main opposite group who may ask a supplementary question. Only members on the list will speak. I'm going to invite councillor Amanda.
Thank you Chairwoman. Mayor, thank you for your report. I've had copious amounts of residents contact me in absolute distress about Watford General Hospital. What can we do? Can I ask the mayor what he deems to be going forward on seeing if we can change this ridiculous decision?
Thank you Amanda. I think it's really important that all of us across Partridge Campaign and to put pressure on the government about this. It's a government decision. We've obviously got our petition. I've written to the Secretary of State. I think we've got to be clear about how can they possibly reach that conclusion. We know that there's land available, there's outline planning permission, there's better access, there's an urgent need. I think the last NHS assessment was that Watford General needed 60 million pounds of works just to keep it standing and crumbling. I mean, that's tens of millions of pounds. Of course, if we leave it seven to nine years just until we actually start the rebuild, by that stage, of course, the costs will have risen even further. So I think it's really important, as I say, all of us put pressure on the government to reconsider. And it's not just a Watford issue. I know that the Liberal Democrat MP for St Albans, Three Rivers Council, lots of people right across the region understand the need for this investment. And so we've got to keep putting pressure on the government to reconsider.
Thank you councillor Japhia.
Yeah, thank you Chair. My questions are on the barrel bikes. I mean, I have to say it was a very good success when they were introduced. And the stands were all, bikes were in its place, all the stands were full. But over the years, it's deteriorated and bikes have seen all over the town laying on the floor and the stands are empty. I've observed quite a few that are empty. So is there still that van going around that used to move them? And if it is, then we need to speak to them that they're not doing their job properly. Their stand needs to be filled and the bikes, there used to be a stand and even a cable that used to hook into them. I don't no longer see that anymore.
Yeah, thanks for raising the question. I mean, it has been a success. I would just remind you that of course Labour put forward an amendment to a budget meeting like this one, if you were to go saying there should be no funding for barrel bikes, which would have meant the end of the scheme. I had a meeting with Beryl this afternoon about the scheme. This year will have more journeys on barrel bikes than any year since the scheme was launched. I don't accept his kind of characterization that somehow the scheme is worse now than it was. The numbers of people using the scheme has risen. We were the first council of any type anywhere in the country to have electric bikes as part of our fleet. They proved particularly successful. Each of those bikes is used on average 2.3 times a day. So we have all the data to show that it is well used. I hope we can continue to invest in those bikes. Always happy to look at particular issues, but as I say, the fundamental point about all the schemes not doing as well as it previously was doing. If you look at the data and the data is available, and I don't think it's appropriate to start heckling while I'm answering your question, committees are able to look at the data. There is evidence that shows how well the scheme is doing. This year, there will be more journeys on barrel bikes than at any year since the scheme was launched.
Councillor Japhia, I don't think you need to come back on that. Are you all right with the answer? Can I invite councillor Nigel to speak please?
Thank you Chairwoman. Mayor, can you tell me when, tell us when the hoarding around the town hall and or the associated area is going to be removed?
Yeah, thank you for the question. So the work's going very well on the Colosseum. The Colosseum will be reopening in the autumn. And so of course the hoarding will be removed for that part of the project when the Colosseum reopens. I'm looking forward, I'm sure, I'm hoping that all of you have seen online, you can, I think it was announced yesterday that Jules Holland will be there in October. There'll be acts throughout October, November, December. So I'm really pleased that this council, despite all the financial challenges, has been able to secure funding for that. We know how important that is for lots of businesses, our taxis, our restaurants, our hotels as well. So the hoardings will be coming down as aspects of it open. As I say, the first will be the Colosseum in the autumn. And then next year, the museum will be opening in the town hall as well.
Thank you Jenny. Thanks for that. But obviously, does he realize that notwithstanding having to wait for the confirmation of the levelling up fund, this has gone on for so long with having that hoarding around. There's so many residents almost feel that we're not open for business, that this, you know, oh, why go to the town hall because it's not, it's not open or the associated department. So that's really one of the reasons that we need to get this open because it's, it's looked, it looks so barren and as if nothing's happening. And obviously, they've seen the building, we knew the building work had to go on, but it's gone on for so long. I think that's, it needs a PR operation to start then to get across to Watford residents, council taxpayers, why it's been hoarded off for so long. I mean, is it really just to do with that levelling up fund or is it other things as well? That's the only thing. I mean, just wanted to see if we can get some PR out to actually explain. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, thank you for the question. Again, I mean, I would say obviously I'm here very often. Our customer service centers continues to be very well used and again, there's data that shows the number of residents that are accessing support there. Of course, many people choose to phone or use online and not visit in person. On the more general point about people not realizing it's open, I mean, I would point out one of the reasons that the Colosseum is opening in autumn, when we'd of course liked it to be done sooner, was the asbestos was found there. And so of course, that affects the timeline of a project such as that. And it was right that we did the full job of removing all the asbestos incredibly thoroughly. We then had the uncertainty around government funding with levelling up fund. It took a number of months. His party took a number of months.
Sorry Mayor Peter. Councillor Bell, can you turn off your?
If the government had announced that funding more quickly, we could have progressed it more quickly. So we've done everything possible and I would actually commend the officers who have worked on this project to make sure that we're going to have a fantastic venue opening, as I say, in a matter of months. And I'm sure it'll be a huge boost right across the town.
Thank you Mayor Peter. I don't think you have anything else to say. Thank you. Question of members of the council. No written question, petition, no petition, urgent business, no urgent business. Council pay policy statement 2025. A report of executive head of HR has been circulated as part of the agenda. Please can I ask councillor Kennedy to move the report? Councillor Kennedy, you have seven minutes.
Thank you Chair. Members, I'm pleased to present the annual pay policy statement. Watford Borough Council's success relies on the talented contribution of its workforce, enabling and ensuring it meets its objectives. This statement seeks to ensure the council is able to attract, recruit, retain and engage the right people in order to achieve this. The paid policy statement pulls together all the elements that make up the council's financial reward practices. It provides assurances of our consistency, fairness and transparency and gives clarity to all our stakeholders about how and what our people are rewarded for. In accordance with section 38.1 of the Localism Act 2011, this statement sets out the level and elements of remuneration for our chief officers and all senior staff. It also confirms that no salary within the council is below the real living wage and that the highest and lowest salaries fall within a normal range. As part of this approach, the salaries for the chief executive and chief officers have been previously agreed by full council, while all other job roles have been evaluated using the Gage system, a computerized version of the National Job Evaluation Scheme set out in the Green Book. By publishing this statement each year, we uphold our commitment to fairness, transparency and accountability in how we reward our workforce. I would like to, I would like to take this opportunity to thank all officers for their hard work and dedication. I recommend this report to council.
Thank you councillor Kennedy. Can I have a second now? You think that's Glen?
Yep, I'd like to second the motion and reserve my right to speak.
Would anyone else like to speak? Anyone else? Okay councillor Nigel, please, please.
Thank you Chairwoman. Yeah, obviously overall, we support the pay policy. Noted that the council employs 228 officers and as councillor Rodriguez says that the lowest remunerated post is within ban four paying 1460 per hour, so obviously above the real living wage, which obviously is good to see. And obviously, I'm sure we'll keep an eye on that. How has the service changes in the last year and subsequent voluntary redundancies affected the pay policy statement or affected the details in the report? If you take into account the 228 there now, clearly, unfortunately, there were some voluntary redundancies. And you know, with any changes that have been in the details here, can you tell us how maybe that's been changed because of, you know, over the last year, since the end of last year? But overall, yeah, we do obviously support this and obviously pay tribute to the hard work and conscientiousness of our staff here at Watford Council. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Nigel. Can I invite Glen? Would you like to speak? Councillor Kennedy, can you sum up please?
Just in reply to Nigel's comment, in terms of the changes to the structure that's taking place this year, that hasn't really implemented, that hasn't really made any changes to the annual pay policy. The main thing, the main thing to note in this pay policy, I think, as you've picked up yourself, is that the range between the lowest and highest paid employee is well within the ratio of the guidelines. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Kennedy. Does are you okay with that Nigel? Okay. Does councillor agree the recommendation set out on page 24 of the agenda pack? All those in favour? Any against? Any abstain? That's been carried. Constitution update, contract procedure rules. A report of the procurement manager and monitoring officer has been circulated as part of the agenda. Please can I ask councillor Kennedy to move the report?
Thank you Chair. Members, the council's contract procedure rules form part of the constitution and set out how the council manages procurement across the organization. There's been a need to amend the contract procedure rules to ensure the council's constitution reflects new legislation following the introduction of the Procurement Act 2023. The council's corporate procurement manager has confirmed that there remains a requirement for the council to act in an open, fair and transparent way when rewarding contracts. Key changes to the contract procedure rules include updates to the permissible tender routes and details on the new notices authorities must provide, updates to job titles and job roles and references to the new legislation. The full details and updated version of the contract procedure rules are contained within the agenda pack. Council should also note some minor additional updates to the wider constitution, which have been recommended by the monitoring officer as part of his obligation to keep the constitution up to date. Those relating to the scheme of delegation have been approved by the elected mayor and are reported to council as per the requirements in the constitution. These changes help to provide clarity and alignment to the constitution rather than introduce any significant changes to responsibility. I therefore propose the recommendations as point two of the report to council.
Thank you. I was advised councillor Tim, you're going to second. Would you like to speak?
Thank you very much Chairwoman. I'd like to second this and reserve my right to speak.
Does any member like to speak? Councillor Nigel? Anyone else? Councillor Nigel?
Thank you Chairwoman. Yeah, overall, we support this. It makes sense, these fairly minor changes. And obviously at number four, four and four five, taking into account the fact that the retirement of the group head of democracy and governance and therefore the changes that had to be made due to that. Obviously Liam takes decisions now. Yeah, most of it just makes common sense now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Tim, would you like to speak?
I will speak. Thank you Chairwoman. Yeah. No, as stated in this report, we are making these changes to comply with the new legislation coming into operation next month. Failure to do so would mean that we'd be in breach of legislation. All councils are doing the same. Nothing further to add. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Tim. Councillor Kennedy, would you like to sum up?
I've got nothing more to say.
Thank you. Apology. I repeat. Does councillor agree that the four recommendations set out on page 62? All who in favour? Any against? Any abstain? That's been carried. Members allowance 2425. A report of Democratic Services manager has been circulated with the agenda. I am inviting councillor Kennedy to move the recommendation. Councillor Kennedy, you have seven, but I'm giving you five.
Thank you Chair. I think I'll take two. Members, council has asked to review the recommendations of independent members' remuneration panel for members allowances, following the agreement of the local government national pay negotiations for 2024. For the third year running, the local government services pay award has been agreed as a set amount, all those in spiral point 43 and below. The agreed amount is 1,290 pounds, which is an increase between 5.7% at spiral point two to 2.5% at spiral point 43. For those above spiral point, for those above spiral point 43 but below deputy chief officer, the level of, the level of the pays increased by is 3.88%. The Democratic Services Manager contacted the panel to advise them of increase. Information was provided about the approach being taken by other authorities where known. The panel was also provided with the median pay scale point of Watford, which is point 31 and the median earning of the council covering all staff, which is point 33. The increases for these spiral points were 3.29% and 3.11% respectively. The independent panel has stated in view of the median, they've agreed to change, they've agreed a change of plus 3.2% increase for members' basic allowance, mayor's remuneration, special responsibility allowance, including group leader. I recommend this report to council.
Thank you councillor Kennedy. I advise us councillor Tim, you second then. Would you like to speak?
Thank you very much Chairwoman and I'll reserve my right to speak. I'll second.
Any other members would like to speak? Councillor Nigel, please go ahead and speak.
Yeah, we agree with the 3.2%, especially taking into account obviously what the report says and the independent remuneration panel and the fact that obviously, you know, all local authorities and negotiating panel agree on this level. We wouldn't agree with anything higher than that. So it makes sense to go along with that and then we'll see what happens in the future. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you councillor Nigel. Councillor Tim, would you like to speak?
Thank you very much Chairwoman. Nothing further to add.
Thank you. Councillor Kennedy, would you like to sum up?
I haven't got anything more to say.
Thank you. Does councillor agree that three recommended recommendations set out on page 111 of the agenda? All in favour? Any against? Any abstain? That's carried. Thank you. Statement of principle, Gambles Act 2025. A report of the licensing committee have been circulated in the agenda, included the original report to the committee. I am invited councillor Richard to move.
Obviously, thank you Chair. Good evening everybody. Nice and simple for me this evening. After members approved the draft statement of principles under the Gambling Act of 2005 at full council in October, I'd have to say the licensing committee fully approved this statement of principles with no changes earlier this month. So I can recommend all members approve recommendations, one and two detailed in their agenda packs this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Richard. I advise us councillor Penn is going to second. Would you like to speak?
I reserve my right to speak for you. So I can go.
Thank you. Any other member would like to speak? Any other member? Nigel? Councillor, favor turning on your thing mean you want to speak?
Yes please.
Thank you. Okay councillor Nigel. Anyone else before I ask councillor Nigel? Councillor Nigel, go ahead please.
Thank you.
Consular Nigel, go ahead, please.
Miss, Miss Mia? Oh, yeah, sorry. And the very fact that Sarah Perman, Director of Public Health, shared her concerns about the fact that so many vulnerable people could be harmed by gambling and that the policy statement should include that applications will be considered against the cumulative impact of applications locally to protect children and valuable, vulnerable persons from being harmed or exploited by gambling. And I think that's the key thing to put in there and the fact that it's now a public health approach, which actually was put forward by the former Director of Public Health before he left. So it's good to see that that's now adopted by Watford Council for the future. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Consular Nigel. Consular Favour, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I want to start by thanking the, the officers and the Licensing Committee, which I'm part of, that looked at these new recommendations and as Consular Bell said, a publicist approach to problem gambling, let's name it what it is. But like I raised in the, in the committee, I'm still concerned that the new recommendations haven't gone wide enough. I know that in four point seventeen in the, in the report, it says by incorporating these suggestions, the Watford Borough Council Gambling Act two thousand and five will be threatened to better reflect the concerns and recommendations of stakeholders and ensure a more comprehensive and effective approach to addressing gambling harms in the community. However, I am concerned about the provisions of the Act, it's of the two thousand and five Gambling Act. Like I raised in the committee, I was actually highlighting that the Gambling Act differentiates the age for children different from the Children's Act. So they differentiated the age to say gambling is permitted under certain circumstances for sixteen plus, but under the Children's Act, the children are defined as eighteen. And that has serious implication as to how young people engage in gambling. I understand that children we play in arcades and all that, but we know that technology has moved on a lot and a lot of young people are becoming addicted to gambling through online gambling more than those other mediums. So to just to summarise the impacts of problem gambling on young people, because I work with young people every day and so I see these things in practice in camps. So around one in five, that's twenty one percent of young people eleven to seventeen are already gambling as at two thousand and twenty three. And so this is an increase in percentage from what we've seen the previous year. And the proportion of young people who scored four or more in our DSM criteria, that's the criteria we used to measure mental wellbeing and mental health, has actually increased in recent time. And in two thousand and twenty four, it has increased from zero point seven percent to one point five percent. So over half of young people have seen or heard gambling advertised online or on different platforms. And so this is part of the concern that I have, that even though we have done a lot in terms of taking a public health approach towards problem gambling, we are still not addressing the need of the young people and how to support them to avoid being addicted and become problem gamblers themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Consular Favour. Consular Penn, would you like to speak?
I, I will just say thank you to Consular Favour as a FEDI for bringing that to everyone's attention. I think it is incredibly complex issue and I think it is right that we acknowledge that the access that young people have on devices is different to the, the generation we all grew up in. So I think, I think whilst it's right to draw attention to that, it's very difficult to manage it when you have got smartphones and devices that children carry them constantly and we, it is no way as a council that we have any control over how its algorithms work to show that material and that content to them. And that is a much further reaching than just addressing what goes into the Gambling Act that, that is being discussed this evening. And just to note the point about the difference between the definition of a child and an adult between the Gambling Act and the Children's Act, I can appreciate the frustration, but it was explained by the senior democratic officer, sorry, the officer who was in the meeting, that it is more to do with the types of devices that they are allowed to use, which is very specific and narrow in arcade situations. But I'm sure Richard Wen will probably have more to say on that.
Thank you, Consular. And Consular Richard, would you like to sum up?
Thanks very much. Yeah, just to come back on it, yeah, I agree, Nigel, the work by the Gambling Harm Strategy, HCC, was excellent and we were very passionate, myself and Kevin Chin, the officer, for putting it into the, the, the policy. And with Favour, yeah, I agree, we spoke about this afterwards. I think at a local level, we've gone as far as we can with this, especially with the implementation of the Gambling Harm Strategy. What it really needs is probably national government to catch up and update that Gambling Act of two thousand and five, which is, we're almost probably a bit out of date by now. So if anyone wants to work on that, you can talk to the MP, you'd be more than happy to. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Consular Richard. Does the Consular agree to recommendation as printed on page two, one twenty one of the agenda pack, subject to the statement given, effect from the date of council? All those in favour? Any against? Any abstain? That's been carried. Financial, finance, financial monitoring report, period eight, twenty four, twenty five. A report of the Chief Finance Officer has been circulated with the agenda, included the report of Cabinet on the thirteenth of January and Finance Scrutiny Committee on the eighth of January two thousand and twenty five and their minutes. I am inviting Consular Kennedy to move the report, please.
Thank you, Chair. I will take councils with key items of the financial monitoring report for period eight. The original budget of fourteen point six two six million was agreed to council on thirtieth of January two thousand and twenty four. The latest forecast variance to budget is an overspend of point seven three oh million. The capital investment programme for two thousand and four, twenty five was also agreed by council on the thirtieth of January two thousand and twenty four, which was thirty two million nine hundred and sixteen thousand pounds. Following a review of the profile of expenditure for two thousand and four, twenty five, the forecast year end position is twenty seven million seven hundred and twenty one thousand pounds. This is a net production of eleven million seven hundred and eighty three thousand pounds. Of this net position, twelve million six hundred and eighty six thousand pounds is requested to be rephased into twenty five, twenty six and twenty six, twenty seven, as most of this relates to the town hall quarter project. The forecast includes one point four five four million of growth, with, with the majority being funded by additional grants and contributions. Starting with revenue, the most significant variance reported is in relation to temporary accommodation, which is a forecast overspend of five hundred and forty four thousand pounds. The unexpected delay of the affordable housing units at the Ascot Road, at the Ascot Road site has had a significant impact on the budget in year. The hundred and nineteen affordable rented homes were originally due to be let in February, March twenty four, and, and it was anticipated that half the units would be let to homeless households. The nomination process is now substantially complete and, and sixty six point four percent of the lets are to homeless households, exceeding original expectations. It is now assumed that households will, will be moving in over the next few months. In addition, there is a continuing rise in the number of households approaching as homeless. Although the rate of inflation has fallen, has fallen, affordability of private housing continues to be a challenge and we are not yet at the peak of the rise in demand as the cost of living crisis continues to impact households. An increase of eight hundred and fifty seven thousand pounds is reported for the property and asset management service. Of this, six hundred and one thousand pounds relates to commercial property income and expenditure. This is, this is predominantly due to lettings being behind forecast for units of the newly built Inspire Watford Business Park. The forecast for Croxley Business Park has been updated to reflect the latest projections for income and expenditure during twenty four, twenty five. The shortfall in income is forecast to be six hundred and ninety three thousand pounds. The net favorable variance of one million and ninety nine thousand pounds within strategic finance includes savings on borrowing costs and an increased return on investments due to higher than estimated cash balances and interest rates having remained at higher levels than forecast. In addition, an underspend of three hundred thousand pounds against the contingency budget for pay increases is reported in year. The latest forecast for finance and resources includes additional audit fees in relation to the twenty one, to the two thousand and twenty one external audit. These, these fees are subject to review, but as reported, but as reported to the Audit Committee in November are expected to be in, in the region of one hundred and seventy five thousand pounds. All other forecast variances are listed in the report. I recommend this paper to council.
Thank you, Consular Kennedy. Consular Peter Kay, are you, do you want to speak?
I second the motion and I reserve my right to speak.
Thank you. Any other member would like to speak? Thank you. Consular Kennedy, Consular Peter Kay, you want to speak?
No, nothing further to add. Thank you.
You like to sum up?
Also, nothing further to add.
Does the Consular agree recommendation on page two thirty four in the agenda pack? All those in favour? Anyone against? Any abstain? That's been carried. Budget and council tax resolution, two thousand and twenty five, twenty six. A report of the Chief Finance Officer has been circulated with the agenda, included the report to Cabinet on the fifteenth of January and Finance Scrutiny on the eight, on the eight and their minutes. I will ask our returning officer Liam to explain.
Okay, so the mayor has proposed that the budget will be allowed to speak for up to twenty minutes. Consular Bell, as the leader of the Labour Group, has advised that he has delegated his right as group leader to speak for up to ten minutes to Consular Khan, who will therefore be called to speak for up to ten minutes. I understand there is an amendment which is being handed out now. Other than the mayor, who has the right to sum up, councillors will only be able to speak once during this debate for up to five minutes. I would remind all members, there is now a legal requirement to have a named vote on this item, and so I will read out names in turn at the conclusion of the debate.
Thank you, Liam. I would remind members that it is now a legal requirement. I will now invite the mayor to move the report. You have, how long are you going to take?
Twenty minutes.
Thank you.
Before I start, I mean, I must say, I've been a member of this council for a decade or more. I don't remember ever being given the amendment to the budget literally as we start speaking. I mean, if Labour had, I know that they, I don't know, maybe they think it's credible, but if it was a credible plan, we'd have had a discussion throughout the process, would have had this in advance. To literally be standing up and say, receive it ten seconds before I give a speech, I think is just, even by their standards, woeful. But let's stop. I rise to propose my budget for the coming financial year and set out our priorities for Watford. Before I begin introducing the budget for the next financial year, I want to take a moment to thank all the members and officers for their hard work over many months to ensure that we are well prepared to face financial challenges and protect our vital frontline services. A particular thank you to Hannah for all of her work. I know that she spent very many hours on it and as ever, the government kind of announced the funding arrangements a few days before Christmas, so it is appreciated the amount of work that she in particular put into it. This budget is presented in light of the continued difficult circumstances, both locally and nationally. The government's bottom budget has brought about a wide range of changes and rises in taxes for many across the nation, including notably the reduction in gross pay threshold for national insurance contributions. This rise in payable national insurance contributions will have a devastating impact on many sectors, especially in social care and health, which I know we'll be debating later, but also local government. Despite the announcement that the, from central government, there would be five hundred and fifteen million pounds in support available, the Local Government Association has raised concerns that this was still short of the six hundred and thirty seven million estimated that it would need to cover the costs for local councils. So despite increases in core spending power over the last couple of years, local government funding in real terms continues to be significantly below the two thousand and ten, eleven levels. The Local Government Association estimates that the reduction in funding is in the region of twenty five percent across the sector after taking account of inflation and population growth. The announcement from central government regarding the commitment to a multi-year settlement for local government starting from two thousand and six, twenty seven is welcome. However, this in itself won't resolve financial challenges for local authorities unless there is also greater funding available to the sector. The LGA has raised this issue and has called on central government for significant and sustained increases in overall funding for councils. This is coupled with the announcement by central government of its intention to abolish two-tier authorities as, as set out in the White Paper in December last year. With the government wishing to reform local government and create unitary authorities across the country, this risks creating a, a gap in local knowledge and leave local residents distant from decision-making and representation. The government wants to rush these unprecedented local government reforms across the country by two thousand and twenty eight. This alone will require significant funds for councils that are already stretched and are focused on delivering services for their residents. So the financial pressures on us are great, but I'm confident that the proposals outlined in this budget are the right ones. They will ensure that residents continue to receive high-quality services here in Watford. Due to our prudent budget decisions over many years, we are thankfully not in a position where we need to force through significant cuts to services. This Liberal Democrat-run council has for many years ensured good financial management, ensuring that we continue to deliver high-quality services that our residents rightly expect our council to provide. A follow-up visit from the LGA Corporate Peer Review in two thousand and twenty four, after the initial visit the previous year, confirmed our strong record in financial stewardship and the good progress we have made in implementing the recommendations. A testament to this strong stewardship is that ninety seven point four percent of the savings planned for two thousand and four, twenty five are expected to be delivered. This is out of two point two, three, eight million pounds. Across the capital programme, we expect to achieve savings of about half a million pounds the current financial year, which we can be reinvested into future projects. We also continue to be successful in securing external funding for projects, including the decarbonisation of community assets and investment in, I think it's six hundred and fifty solar panels at Woodside Leisure Centre. Maintaining these high standards has been incredibly hard against a backdrop of heavy cuts over the past decade. Local councils have had to respond to growing demands on our services whilst at the same time seeing a grant funding from central government being cut. As economic activity continues to slow and the increasing impact on people's financial situations, we can expect further increases in demand on our services. To deal with this reality, we have to do things differently. When preparing the budget before this evening, I have two things in mind throughout. Firstly, we must protect high-quality frontline services that our residents depend upon. And secondly, we must continue to invest in programmes which ensure Watford can be a thriving and vibrant town in line with the manifesto commitments I was elected on. I know how important our services are for our residents and this budget sets out how we will protect frontline services and continue our improvements across our town. Firstly, we will continue to ensure that Watford remains and becomes an even greener town. It's important we continue to invest in our great leisure facilities and work in partnership to ensure we have some of the best parks in the country. So this budget sets out that we'll invest fifty thousand pounds to improve the footpath at Castlebury Park and the nature reserve. There'll be twenty five thousand pounds for shrub replacements, twenty thousand pounds for water fountains in our green park, something I know Consular Williams is very keen to see achieved. We have achieved a lot in Watford to make this a greener place. And again, something that Consular Stokesbury is very passionate about, this budget includes two hundred and forty seven thousand pounds for the work in relation to the River Colne, funding the Castlebury wetlands and of course, continuing our tree planting programme. I was elected on a commitment to plant twenty thousand trees over the course of the four years. We've already achieved that after two years. It is important that we reach net zero by two thousand and thirty s of town. So we're encouraging residents to reduce their carbon emissions. We've installed many EV rapid charging points across our town to ensure greater accessibility for for residents with electric vehicles. We will continue to ensure more residents are able to access these charging points by investing £80,000 to expand the network. At Watford Council, we are playing our role in reducing carbon emissions. Therefore, we are investing £261,000 to replace our own vehicle fleet for more sustainable ecological electric vehicles. I know that families across Watford are continuing to struggle to get by. Although it's not in the news as much these days, the cost of living crisis has not gone away. And this budget protects significant funding for Watford citizens' advice, who do fantastic work supporting families right across our town. It means that we'll continue to fund the winter night shelter, meaning that no one has to sleep rough throughout the winter months, and all the work we are doing, I know Consul Patonson and officers, to address the challenges that we face as a result of the national housing crisis. It is important that we continue to ensure that Watford remains a safe and vibrant place for all our residents and visitors. That is why we will fund £25,000 to ensuring our CCTV network across the town is up to date, those 300 cameras that are monitored right throughout the week. When it comes to ensuring that our town is thriving, placed, is welcoming and tidy, we're investing £15,000 in replacing the litter bins and £10,000 on shopping parade improvements. Additionally, we will continue the improvements on St Albans Road with £200,000 for phase two of this work after the success of phase one in 2021. Additionally, we will invest £466,000 to improve our cycle and road infrastructure, making our town more accessible and with greater active transport methods. We'll continue our successful work and achievements, such as the launch of the Green Loop in November, which has already proved popular. I was elected on a clear manifesto, and despite the challenges, I'm determined to deliver the commitments I made to residents. This budget provides the funding needed to secure the reopening of Watford Colosseum later this year and a fantastic new museum next year. Our overarching mission with this budget is to protect frontline services despite the real terms cuts. We have a good track record of delivering high-quality services to budget, achieving efficiency savings, and generating additional income in order to provide excellent public services. Despite balancing the books as much as possible and good financial management, the lack of funding from central government means we do have to increase council tax by 2.99%. I made a commitment that our increase would be below the rate of inflation, and the current rate of inflation according to RPI is 3.4% in October, 3.6% in November 24. So I'm making sure that I stick to that commitment. I think the other thing to compare us with is, because when residents get their bills, of course, it includes a large proportion that goes to Hertfordshire County Council. They plan to increase their proportion by 4.9%, 4.99%, and the Police and Crime Commissioner, they're planning to, he's planning to increase his proportion by 5.57%. So when our residents see those increases, it's important to remind them that the vast majority is coming from the Conservative-run county council and the Conservative Police and Crime Commissioner. So every pound of council tax they pay, only 13 pence comes to Watford Council. So in conclusion, despite the financial challenges and worries across local government, Watford Council stands as a model of stability. Unlike the county council and Police and Crime Commissioner, our share of council tax will be increased by less than the rate of inflation. In this budget, we are helping those most in need, making Watford an even more sustainable town, and delivering on the commitments I made to residents. Our priority is to deliver excellent services for all our residents, making sure they get good value for money. I would urge you to back this budget so we can continue to make this town an even better place for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. I understand Consular Kennedy is seconding. Would you like to speak?
I'm seconding this motion and I reserve my right to speak.
Okay. Would any other member like to speak? Should I do Consular Assif first? I should now invite Consular Assif to exercise your right of replying on behalf of the Labour Group.
Yes, I'd like to forward an amendment, Madam Chairman, which is available here. Hopeful to see. So, Madam Chairwoman, fellow councillors and residents of Watford who may be seeing this online, think, the Labour Group's proposed amendments to the Lib Dem budget can be seen in the attack sheet. I stand before you to outline a plan that puts our residents first, a budget that reflects amendments that reflects their priorities, meets their needs and secures Watford's future, admits significant changes on the horizon. So this year's budget is being prepared during an unprecedented period of uncertainty. As many of you will know, local government reform is on the horizon. Watford Borough Council alongside other local authorities will likely become part of a new unitary council structure. While this reform offers opportunities to improve efficiencies, it comes with considerable risks. The transition will require financial stability, careful planning and community focus. So under these circumstances, we believe that the Liberal Democrat budget fails to address these challenges effectively. So the use of reserves to plug short-term gaps and lack of focus on immediate community concerns leaves us vulnerable to uncertainties of reform. So in contrast, in proposing amendments, in contrast, we are proposing amendments that prioritise cleaner streets, safer parks, stronger community connections and financial resilience, ensuring Watford is ready to face the future. So the Liberal Democrats have proposed an increase in council tax, raising band D charge to £308.01, while this remains within the referendum cap, it replaces, it places an additional burden for residents already struggling with rising costs of living. We believe that residents are being asked to pay more, they should see tangible benefits, see the tangible benefits. The current Lib Dem budget lacks this clarity. Our amendment focuses on delivering real, visible improvements that residents can appreciate daily, cleaner streets, safer parks and meaningful investment in community projects. One of the most common complaints we hear from residents is about cleanliness. Fly tipping, littering, unclean streets are constant frustrations. Yet the Liberal Democrat budget offers little in terms of immediate action. We propose funding for an additional street cleaner to form a rapid response team. This team will target fly tipping hotspots and ensure streets are swept promptly and thoroughly. Clean streets are a basic expectation, not a luxury. It's time that we met that expectation. Safety is another pressing issue. Many residents, particularly women and parents, are very concerned with me, walking through, for example, Cala and Rec, especially in the dark afternoons after school and in the evenings. This park is a key route to families attending Beechfield School and back, and it's a very, very popular park in North Watford. Yet it remains poorly lit, making it feel unsafe. Our amendment allocates funds to install better lighting in Cala and Rec, ensuring that all residents can use this vital space safely. This is simple, yet impactful change that demonstrates our commitment to listening and to addressing community concerns. Looking ahead, we want Watford to be a place that brings people together. In 2026, the Cricket World Cup will take place in India, and in 2027, we'll celebrate 150 years of the Ashes. These milestones provide an incredible opportunity to unite our community and provide active lifestyles. So we're proposing, as well as this budget change, a team of councillors versus officers as part of, we propose a cricket carnival, a town-wide celebration which involves schools, local cricket clubs, residents who support this, will fund a cricket square in local parks, enabling residents to request and enable these facilities wherever feasible. This initiative isn't just about support, it's about fostering a sense of pride and togetherness that will strengthen our community for years to come. It's a tangible example of how our budget invests, our amendment invests in people. Another key focus of our amendment is Wicklow Road precinct, an area of strategic importance due to its proximity to Watford Football Club and the hospital. It serves as a gateway to our town, yet it remains underutilised and in need of investment. Our proposal is to revitalise this precinct, enhancing its infrastructure and creating opportunities for community use. This isn't just an investment in bricks and mortar, it's an investment in Watford's identity. One of our key concerns with the Lib Dem budget is its use of reserves. While reserves are an important tool for managing financial pressures, they must be used judiciously and strategically. The Dems have proposed using reserves to plug gaps and manage cash flow, particularly in areas like commercial income. Well, this may address short-term pressures that leave the council exposed to future uncertainties. Our amendment includes strengthening our reserves, putting money back into the reserves, not just to weather the immediate challenges of reform, but to safeguard services for future generations. This is not about stockpiling funds, about ensuring that Watford can maintain its high standards of service delivery, no matter what challenges and changes lie ahead. Let me be clear, the Lib Dem budget is not all bad. There are areas of common ground, and we agree on the need for responsible financial management and investment in key services. That's absolutely key. The question is whether this budget goes far enough, whether it truly delivers for the people of Watford. We must not lose sight, what matters most is our residents. Clean streets, safe parks, community cohesion, financial stability, these are foundations of a strong, resilient Watford, and they all focus, and that's the focus of our amendments. Madam Chairwoman, councillors, residents, this budget is a statement of our priorities. It's about showing leadership in uncertain times, leadership to the concerns of our community and preparing Watford for the future. By supporting these amendments, we can deliver a budget that truly reflects needs of our residents, a budget that invests in cleanliness, safety, community pride and financial resilience, a budget that ensures Watford is ready to thrive, both now and as part of any future unitary council. I urge you to support this proposal, so enjoy us in delivering an amendment to this budget that truly puts residents first. Together, we can all create cleaner, safer and stronger Watford, a town that we all can and continue to be proud of to call home. Thank you.
Thank you, Consul Assif. Consul Nigel, I understand you're seconding the amendment.
Yes, thank you, Chairwoman. I second the labour amendment and reserve my right to speak.
Would anyone like to speak? You have got, what, five minutes? Okay, let's state the name correctly. Consular Agar. Peter Kay. Ian. Mark. W. I'm gonna, okay, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna run through the name quickly. There's a lot of people here want to speak. Peter Kay, Ian, councillors, Peter Kay, Ian, Tim, Agar, Glenn, Mark W, Kennedy, Jock Tarr. Have I missed anyone? Okay, thank you. Let's start with Peter Kay.
Thank you, Chairwoman. So just a really more procedural point than anything else. My role is Vice Chair on Finance Scrutiny Committee, and that's where I'm predominantly speaking from. Peter Taylor already commented on the lateness of this agenda, this amendment, sorry, that we're receiving this only as the speech has started. But equally, none of these proposals in the amendment were brought forward at the Finance Scrutiny Committee earlier in January, which is, as its name suggests, the point where, the place where the committee, where proposals to changes to budgets or funding direction of the council really should be proposed in the first place. None of these points were raised at that committee. The other point is, if I look at the numbers on the proposal for the amendment, this addresses less than 1% of the council's annual expenditure. So Consul Khan said, he said the Lib Dem budget was not all bad. So from the point of view that this covers less than 1%, does that mean that more than 99% of the budget ended in fact good of this council? I would agree, I would agree, it's 100%, but I'll settle for just over 99% if that's okay. The other point is, the points raised here, some of them were mentioned last year, on the amendment last year, so not an awful lot has changed in terms of the savings, and we debated that last year, and I think the consensus of the council was that it's a good thing that we communicate with residents through a number of different media to make sure that residents understand what the council is doing, what's available to residents, and how they can access the services. You know, we've discussed that already. Why are we discussing it again? Thank you.
Thank you, Peter Kay. Consular Ian. Consular Ian.
Thank you, Chair. Well, I was gonna do the maths as well, Peter, so I won't do that. I just want to start actually by highlighting frankly the specificity of this amendment from my perspective, because I do seem to recall in a recent general election, videos going around from the now Prime Minister saying there won't be a penny more council tax paid by councils. That was in a general election campaign where someone was standing to be Prime Minister, and yet I've not seen anything close to sufficient support for local councils to support them in that ambition. So I would say that was pretty cheap politics nationally, and I think actually this proposed budget, if we can give it that title, is pretty cheap politics locally too. Let's just go through them, shall we, just really quickly? Removal of political advisers to post to mayor. At a time when the most rushed and ambitious reforms to local government is being proposed with absolutely no chance for us to even talk to our residents, let alone really come together with a local plan, you're proposing diminishing one of the convening voices for Hertfordshire. That's what you're proposing in this budget. Then the digitising of My Watford magazine. What you're actually saying is, if you struggle to get online, we don't care. We don't want you to hear what the council's up to. You're deepening, you're proposing deepening the digital divide in Watford. One of the things that we've been working to actually tackle, and I seem to recall members of the opposition group talking about in various committee meetings. Redesign of Communications Department. I don't know what that means, because I've got a single line item. I'm presuming it's a very Labour proposal of cutting staff, very, very Labour, and that's on the back of your first question of the day about not having sufficient capacity in your mind to promote the Watford Colosseum and what's going on with the hoarding. So I find this deeply, deeply inconsistent with the suggestions you made today. By the way, I've said more about your motion now than your motion says in the time that I've had barely minutes to read it. Your proposed expenditure, this is a question, I'm looking forward to the answer. Have you met with a single member of the Finance Scrutiny Committee or a single cabinet member to propose them and see if they can be proposed? And I do, as Peter Gloss takes solace, that actually you're proposing 0.9% change to budget. Thank you. Let's not vote for this amendment.
Thank you, Consular Ian. Consular Agar.
Thank you, Chairwoman, and thank you to my colleagues across the chamber for their proposal. I am disappointed, and I feel that is very disrespectful to making the amendment just before we start talking about it. I think it's unfair to say that we could have a really good discussion and prepare for the good discussion for the residents of Watford. One of the points, what I wanted to highlight, is the community focus. Looking at the proposal, I do not see that this proposal addressed the current cost of living crisis. I can see that in the proposal, the Labour amendment, talking about the green parks, but actually they're mentioning only one. It's not across the whole town. I can see that they're talking about the digitalisation, but I'm asking them, where is the inclusivity? I can see that we are talking about the commercial sponsorship, which is happening already with the big events across the town when we have that opportunity, so we do think about it already. And when I see what has been proposed, I do believe that the Watford Liberal budget, the council budget, it's the budget who unites Watford across the town. In these current challenges, what we are facing is a very well-balanced budget, and that's the message. It addressed the current financial pressure, and it's not It addressed the current financial pressure, and it's no doubt about it that without a good leadership and the hard work of the officers, we do believe and we do deliver, and that's the difference. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Agar. I'm just gonna remind the members that we have got three other motions, so I know you allow five minutes, but guys, can you just please cut it quickly? I'm gonna now call upon councillor Glenn.
Thank you, Chairwoman. I hope that wasn't directed directly at me. I'll try and keep it as clean as I can. I just wanna start, I mean, I'm very proud of this budget, I think, in the fact that it protects frontline services and there's a below inflation council tax rise in the current economic climate is something to be very proud of. I would, you know, just picking up on the amendment, I've been a cricket lover all my life, attempted player, which I continue to do with little success, but I would just like to highlight, I mean, Watford council have made huge investments, we're lucky in our Woodside, significant investments in the Cricket Square at Watford Town Cricket Club, which is a real facility to be proud of. Owned and benefit from that much support, and using the SIL money that's been collected from developers in recent years, we were able to approve a £20,000 grant for state-of-the-art brand-new cricket nets, which I would encourage anyone watching who, you know, is a keen cricket lover to join the club and make use of those excellent facilities that have been developed by the council. And I'll finish with a suggestion. The idea of reducing, digitizing the magazine, sorry, to use modern methods of communication and reduce costs, I would suggest in future that you could just email rather than printing these out 10 seconds before the budget item. You might have emailed it to us this morning, and then we could have considered it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Glenn. Councillor Jockta, I don't want you to feel that I'm leaving you for last, I'm gonna push you first before the others, thank you. Councillor Jockta, can you speak, please?
All right, Chair, I'm speaking in favour of the amendment, and first of all, I wanna thank the Lib Dems, they finally listened about some investment on Woodford Road, which we had been harping on for a long time, and which was much needed, and that investment came. And we have been asking for the investment on the Vicarage Road, the precinct, for a long time, and I hope they will finally listen to us and invest the money. As it's a gateway, as Asif has already said, not only to the football ground, hospital, it's a gateway to the mosque, which is that place, Vicarage Precinct is really well-used, a gateway to the Gurdwara, gateway to a few churches in the High Street, and it's really well-used. And maybe in the future, we need to put lights up there, which can stay there for all year, which can be turned on at Eid, Diwali, Vaisakhi, Christmas, and these lights can remain there and turn them on at each event, so people can understand the proper diversity in our town, that the people, all the different communities, different religions, that live really peacefully with each other. And the cricket, as I said, sorry, as my colleague said there, I attempt to play cricket as well, I've been playing cricket for quite a while, and this World Cup and the cricket carnival, it can be a day which a cricket game can last nearly all day when we play the live cricket over game. That will bring the community back to you. And I do, I have played on the Woodside Cricket Ground as well, that is an excellent facility, and there is other squares there. What Asif, what he's suggesting is more, that which gets the community involved. Cricket is particularly popular with the Asian community as well, and we've got quite a large number of Pakistani community and the Indian community that take really strong. At the moment, in the cricket rankings, it's Australia and India that are number, sorry, Sahel, it's Australia and India that are number one and two, India's number two, sorry, number one and two, 20 over game and 50 over game, and Australia's number one in Test match. Pakistan's quite far behind it, Sahel.
So Jockta?
Yeah. So, well, I am speaking in favour of the motion, it's got good suggestions in it, please take it on board, and let's invest some money on the Vicarage precinct, which is much needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Mark W.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. When you're the opposition and you have no hope of running the council, you can be radical, you can be ambitious, you can set out a stall that makes people think, hey, these guys think differently from the administration. So what have we got? We've got items of expenditure, three of them are capital items that ought to be put in the capital budget, so the only revenue item, the only small change they want to do to the running of this authority is to bring in one street cleaner. I'm sorry, if that's the best you guys can do in terms of radically showing us how you'd like to run Watford if the opportunity ever arose, then I'm really just amazed at your weakness of thought and lack of ambition. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Mark. Councillor Kennedy?
Okay, thank you, thank you, Chair. I think a lot of the points which I was going to raise have already been covered, so I'm not gonna go through all of them. I think what I'd like to say is that the Labour, sorry, the Labour motion is one that, yeah, what I'd like to say is that the Labour motion, one has been produced at the very, very last minute, which hasn't given us enough time to basically debate and discuss it. I'm certain there were very good reasons for that. In terms of the budget that we've pulled together, officers and members have worked on it for months and months and months, and it has been reviewed by a number of committees within council, including Finance Scrutiny Committee and Cabinet Committee. But saying all of that, there is no harm in Labour playing forward this motion, they have got the right to do that. In terms of some of the points that have been raised, one in terms of council tax increases, the council tax increase of 2.99% is set within the level agreed by the newly-formed Labour government. Also, the 2.99% increase is below the level of inflation, and inflation is not due to come down significantly over the next year. A point is made in terms of the use of reserves. I would make the point that it's due to the strong financial stewardship of this council, that we do have reserves, and we can use those reserves when the time calls for it. Finally, the point that I'd like to make is, I'm pleased to confirm that the Lib Dem budget is a balanced budget with no cuts. As the mayor said, we are managing finance as well, ensuring residents get good value for money, and we prioritise money in key areas, frontline services, sustainability, and helping those most in need. As such, I can't, I can't agree with the Labour motion.
Thank you, councillor Kennedy. Councillor Tim, I nearly forget you.
Thank you, very much. I really just wanted to get up and sort of, sort of comment about how well the council is doing at the moment, really. As per the latest performance and progress report, quarter two, it was great to see that in the delivery plan, 86 of the 99 projects were either complete or on track, and when looking at the KPIs, it was a similar result. In my area, 16 out of the 17 indicators had met or were in tolerance of their targets. If we had a few more swimmers taking up lessons in Woodside, it would have been 17 out of 17. And that, it does cover, appreciate this, sort of fly tipping, litter picking, but I do appreciate they are very hot topics for all of us out there meeting our residents, and there are certain areas in Watford where those problems are very aspirated. But overall, Watford Borough Council is a well-run council, and it's a great refuge service, excellent parks, award-winning leisure centres, excellent cemetery service, and the list goes on, really. And yes, we've recently had a peer review, LGA peer review, and basically that came out with an excellent result as well. It's a great place to live, to work, rest and play. And let's not forget about that one. I was actually going to go into my usual bit about the history of Labour when they ran the town, sort of thing. I won't do it today. I was gonna do it in a teacher format today, but there would have been a couple of detentions for the Labour members. But no, I just want to make comments about the Labour budget here. I appreciate you've got lighting for Callahan Recreation, I agree, that's a capital expenditure, not revenue expenditure, but it goes against police advice, community teens' advice, sort of thing. So that one does need to be looked into further on that, on that level. The Cricket Square, does seem like there's lots of cricketers in here today, and I'm a member of a cricket club as well, and I do like the idea of a sort of a match between officers and councillors, that would be good, I'd like to get that arranged. But yeah, the main thing about here, introducing a cricket square in a local park, wonderful suggestion. I've had surveys done in Orchard Park, I've had surveys done in Harebrake, and we're now going to looking for King George the Fifth. Please work with me on that one, I would love to get that in, there's no doubts about that. And Jockta, tongue-in-cheek, but England beat India today. Yeah, and just the investment into Vicarage Road precinct, I used to remember you, when you actually had sort of Callahan councillors, you used to do this down in St Orpens Road, sort of thing. But yeah, more details, please. This looks like it's just a quick pack of a fag packet, sort of a thing. More details, explain what it's all about. Endorse the Lib Dem budget, and look forward to voting on that later. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Tim. Thank you. Okay, go ahead and speak for one minute, please.
Thank you. Just get back on here. Our amendment is fully costed and approved by the head of finance, and I'm amazed, actually, because so much time has been spent by Liberal Democrat councillors, very concerned about our, as they say, small, two-page budget amendment, rather than talking about how fantastic their own is, you know, I was amazed. It didn't take us long to get them all going, it only needed, you know, a few, a little, you know, a minor amendment to their budget, which I fully admit is only a minor amendment, and councillor Peter K, I keep saying Peter K, I keep thinking he's gonna do an act, I keep thinking it's Peter K here, because she says Peter K. But your points about, well, why was none of this raised, which you say every year, why was not none of this raised at the budget panel? As old hands like councillor Watkins knows, as they never do, liberals never do at county council, and as we never do, we never reveal our hand at meetings coming up before the budget, it's always on the budget day. I'm sure you won't be doing that tomorrow, and we won't be doing that, so it's the same old thing, we never put things forward actually in the finance or in the past, the budget committee, and you know that. It's the same old game every year. We have tried in the past, sometimes much more, maybe before your time, Peter, councillor Claus, we have tried in the past, much more detailed opposition amendments, and, you know, in the end, that's it, we've changed that. Now we've just had a sensible, minor but sensible amendments, which we think they are sensible. Much of what's in the Liberal Democrat budget is very good and sensible, you know, we're not gonna disagree on that. Overall, we will abstain on the main Liberal Democrat budget, but as I say, much of it obviously is there and needs to be, needs to be said and needs to go through, as any budget does. But as I say, it's costed, we're pleased that it does show a surplus, our one of 162,000, that we would sensibly be able to put back into the reserves. I did question the portfolio holder for finance at the Finance Scrutiny Committee as to whether he's okay with the level of reserves, he said he is, but I still think that level of reserves needs to be kept a watchful eye on, as councillor Khan said earlier on. I think it does contain sensible investment in Vicarage precinct, as councillor Khan and councillor Dinsa say, and also obviously looking across at the park in Leggitts, important to look at lighting there. We do call for the removal of the mayoral political assistant post and the cost of the mayoral office, especially in the, and I know we say that every year for a long time now, but fair enough, a lot of people say, what's the point of the mayor having the overall mayor and all those extra costs? So that's fair enough, and I mean, when you think now, in the light of the inevitable changes to the governance of the borough in the next few years. Again, you mentioned spending on the cricket pitch and leisure, and I take on board what councillor Williams says in the King George the Fifth and others, and that's good to hear. These, of course, are not major changes, we're not saying they are major changes, you talk about 1%, but we recognise that a small district council like Watford with its overall budget, 14, 15, 16 million, whatever, compared to the county councils, for example, overall billion, main engine of finance for our county, has far more significance when it comes to the choices we face, we understand that. But there is a question of the council's capital investment, whether the council should be still involved in as many projects as they are at this time, but, you know, obviously some of them are welcome, and we understand that, and we welcome the government confirming the council building an 11 and up investment, and if that means that the council is now open for business, as I take what the mayor says, then that's good. If those hoardings are going, and we now look, Watford is gonna look better, and if it's open for business, that's obviously much better. But in my time as a councillor here, more and more, and associated with the council, more and more powers and responsibilities have been taken away or voluntarily, you know, given away, if you like. We go back to the viola, the privatisation of the recycling and road sweeping, obviously even we look at the-
It seems like your time is up. One minute?
We think back to even the leisure centres, those sort of privateisation, and even if you think back to the historic housing stock, that historic decision in 2007, which I know was voted on, a very, very small, you know, majority, very, very small amount of people were voting, so lots of things have happened, there's so, you know, we don't do anything like as much that the small district council like Watford, like we did even when I first, you know, came on originally in 2001. So so many things have changed when it comes to funding, so I think we're all gonna have to accept the inevitable, that there is gonna be major changes in local government. Councillor Taylor, or Mayor Taylor, says that it's being rushed through by, say, 2028. Well, I don't think three years is rushing it through, it certainly would be rushing it through if it was in the next few weeks, and I think it would have been wrong to have gone in that first phase.
Thank you.
Okay, I just think it would have been wrong to have gone in the first phase, and that's why I think I agree with the letter.
Your time is up, sir.
Thank you, Chairwoman.
Mayor Peter, can you exercise your right, please?
Thank you very much. I replied to some of that, I mean, I did agree with Nigel when he said much of it is very good, but he did say, what's the point of the mayor? I would just remind Labour that, of course, the reason we have a mayor is that Labour proposed having a mayoral system, there was a referendum, 52% of residents voted for it, it was the will of the people, and so we accepted it. On leisure centres, I mean, he talked about leisure centres, the motion, obviously the amendment does nothing on leisure centres, but just to point out that when Labour run the leisure centres, they cost the council a million pounds every year, we now have leisure centres that make the council money, and both have been independently assessed as outstanding, only five leisure centres out of 700 have been given that rating, two of them are in Watford. So I just kind of feel there's a lack of reality. The other thing about this, I think if you're a serious opposition, if you're thinking, how can we improve the whole town? I'm really conscious that we have councils across Watford that are the mayor of the whole town. Whenever it comes to their amendments, it's always about two little changes to, guess what, their wards. There's nothing here about the rest of town, why does it always just have to be about, what can we do for, you know, Vicarage Road or Callahan, rather than thinking about bigger than that? I mean, just picking up on a few of the specifics, so My Watford magazine, the corporate peer challenge happened, what did they say? You need to think really carefully about people who can't access things digitally. It's actually an issue that Nigel Bell has raised many, many times. So what do Labour do repeatedly, saying, let's get rid of the paper thing that we're delivering to everyone who can't access things digitally. They then propose a number of things that are already happening, so the point about commercial sponsorship, the fireworks have been sponsored, they were sponsored by D W V, they've been sponsored by Barclay, so that's already happening. They then also talk about the precincts, we have a policy of investing in our precincts, that's already happening. They then talk about Callahan Rec and safety, so if any of us were going to do something to improve safety, the first people we'd talk to are the police. So I'd just like to check councillor Khan, have you spoken to the police? You can just nod to indicate you have. The police don't want things like that to happen, the point is about, yep.
Can we just let him finish?
Madam Chair, according to the constitution, I have a right, he's asked for a specific question, and it's a personal statement as well. I have spoken to people in the parks, the department about this particular issue, I've had a meeting on-site about this, they themselves, on my behalf, have spoken to Liam, the antisocial behaviour officer of the council as well. So there's some research into this as well, it's not a fly-ointment type of issue.
So the question was, have you spoken to the police? And the answer is clearly, you haven't. The point is, that park is right next to a major road, Gammon's Lane, and if you're going to the school, you clearly want to encourage people to use the well-lit road, that's the advice of the police, we're following the police advice. I would just say that if, you know, Labour councillors actually wanted to work with me on some of these issues, you know, he talks about Whippendale Road, Victoria Passage, we've got a fantastic- we've got a fantastic councillor now in Vicarage who actually works with me and achieved these things. If you want to improve cricket facilities, councillor Ahmed works with me to actually make a difference and get things done. Rather than presenting some, you know, cheap options right to the last minute, why don't they take, you know, follow the example of Liberal Democrat councillors who day in, day out actually approach me, want to get things sorted, come forward with proposals, discuss them with officers, and actually make a difference to their residents, rather than just producing things at the last minute that are flimsy, ill-thought-through, and lots of them are already happening. I mean, councillor Jagtar made the point about, we should have lights that change for certain events, we already have that, we have, we have lights across the street, along our high street, that will be lit up for things like De Valley, remember State Pride. So I hope you will back the motion, and I hope you will reject these ill-thought-through proposals from Labour. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now vote on the Labour amendments. I'm going to call upon the returning officer Liam to sort this out first.
Okay, thank you, Chairwoman. Okay, so to confirm, this is a vote in relation to the amendment first. So as previously, I'll call out your names one by one, if you can indicate if you're for or against. So Chairwoman Alan Williamson?
Yes.
Yes, we go, is this the amendment?
No, no. No, no.
Councillor Ahmed?
You know I'm not going to vote.
Against.
Councillor Bashir?
Against.
Councillor Begum?
Against.
Councillor Bell?
For.
Councillor Borelio?
Against.
Councillor Clark-Taylor?
Against.
Councillor Tindza?
For.
Councillor Deducta?
Against.
Councillor Dyson?
Against.
Councillor Esafed?
For.
Councillor Grimston?
Against.
Councillor Hill?
Against.
Councillor Hoffman?
Against.
Councillor Johnson?
Okay.
Councillor Khan?
For.
Councillor Claus?
Against.
Councillor Martins?
Against.
Councillor Nembad?
Against.
Councillor Newstead?
Against.
Councillor Osborne?
Against.
Councillor Patterson?
Against.
Councillor Rodriguez?
Against.
Councillor Asaffery?
Against.
Councillor G Saffery?
Against.
Councillor Saunders?
Against.
Councillor Shaw?
For.
Councillor Short?
Against.
Councillor Stokesbury?
Against.
Councillor Summer?
Against.
Councillor Woolford?
Against.
Councillor Watkins?
Against.
Councillor Wenham?
Against.
Councillor Williams?
Against.
Thank you. The amendment is lost.
The amendment has been lost. We now move on to the substantive recommendation. Does the council agree the recommendation as outlined in paragraph 3.0 of the budget and council tax resolution report on page 281 to 283 and 433 of the update agenda pack? I'll call on the Liam to ask the members.
Okay, thank you. So to confirm, this is for the substantive recommendation. So Chairwoman Alan Williamson?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
For.
Councillor Ahmed?
For.
Councillor Bashir?
For.
Councillor Begum?
For.
Councillor Bell?
For.
Councillor Borelio?
For.
Councillor Clark-Taylor?
For.
Councillor Dinsa?
For.
Councillor Deducta?
For.
Councillor Dyson?
For.
Councillor Esafed?
For.
Councillor Grimston?
For.
Councillor Hill?
For.
Councillor Hoffman?
For.
Councillor Johnson?
For.
Councillor Khan?
For.
Councillor Claus?
For.
Councillor Martins?
For.
Councillor Nembad?
For.
Councillor Newstead?
For.
Councillor Osborne?
For.
Councillor Patinson?
For.
Councillor Rodriguez?
For.
Councillor Asaffery?
For.
Councillor G Saffery?
For.
Councillor Saunders?
For.
Councillor Shaw?
For.
Councillor Short?
For.
Councillor Stokesbury?
For.
Councillor Summer?
For.
Councillor Woolford?
For.
Councillor Watkins?
For.
Councillor Wenham?
For.
Councillor Williams?
For.
Thank you, that is carried.
That has been carried. Members, we have got three motion, and it's now eight minutes past nine, so let's get going with that, please. Three motion has been received, we will go through them in order of receipt of the Democratic Service Manager. However, as it is now time, I would like us all to agree, well, we don't need to do that yet, because I think we're going to finish on time, aren't we? Yes, of course. So let's start the first motion. Social care employee national insurance contribution. The motion has been proposed by Penn. And second, by Ian, councillor Ian. Details are contained in the agenda. I will now invite councillor Penn to move the motion.
Thank you, Chairwomen. I'm delivering this on behalf of Jenny Pattinson, who's obviously removed herself for a conflict of interest. Chair colleagues, in the current challenging economic environment, climate, it is incredibly difficult for all organisations to be financially sustainable. For the care and charitable sector, it is particularly difficult. The cost of providing services, whether that be care at home, support services to vulnerable people, debt advice, day services, mental health support or residential care, has continued to rise at a rate that far exceeds the funding available, which has meant a long-lasting, persistent squeeze on services across both the social care sector and the charitable sector for many years. We all know social care has been the correlation of the, to the NHS for many years. Many of those who work in social care were cautiously hopeful of a better future with a government change. We were looking forward for the manifesto promise of reform of social care funding, or at least a commitment to delivering a better future for the sector. The recently delivered autumn budget is at best ill-thought-through and at worst a cruel blow to already stretched sectors. No new funding for the exceptional services social care and charitable services deliver on behalf of the NHS, and a huge and unaffordable increase to national insurance payments, which has in effect added significant increase to operating costs of all social care providers across the UK. For many care providers in Watford, they will have to find additional funding to cover this cost at a time when we have only just recovered from a crippling pandemic, exhausted efficiency savings, and when the cost of care is continuing to rise at a rate which far exceeds the rates paid for care. This is a repeating picture across the whole sector. Nationally, my colleagues across the sector are telling me that, sorry, telling Jenny that they have no choice but to cut services, hand back contracts and slash wage bills just to stay afloat. Looking at the position in Watford, in January, general acute wards at Watford, West Hertfordshire Hospitals were 93.5% full on average, well above the safe limit of 85% recommended by health experts. Forty percent of these beds are in corridors or day centres to cope with the pressure. Many beds are occupied by long-stay patients who could do better if safely discharge the community with a care package. The simple fact is that the social care providers do not have the funding to be able to take more packages, and the budget enforced increases to national insurance means that there will be less packages in the future. Over the last few months, councillor Stokesbury and councillor Patterson have visited and spoken to many health and care services, and have heard the same story from each. Without urgent and appropriate funding, they will have to cut services, hand back care packages, and focus on self-funding clients, which means that those that need support services will only be able to access them if they can afford to pay. The charitable sector in Watford is telling us that same story. Without funding to cover the huge increase in staffing costs as a direct result of the budget, they will have to scale back operations. The charity sector has been doubly hit by these changes. The reduction in the level at which they start to pay national insurance contributions has been hugely lowered, which means the hundreds of part-time staff, bank and flexible workers that keep the charitable sector going, increase the staffing costs, which makes these staff unaffordable for most small charities. In the most part, the only option for social care and the charitable sector will be to cut pay, reduce staffing and therefore services. This is disastrous for those in receipt of services. This makes, this should make all of us incredibly angry. The view is that incredible caring, compassionate, loving teams that work across the social care and charitable sector deserve to be fairly rewarded for the life-changing services that they deliver to the most vulnerable. These are emotionally and physically demanding roles. There appears to be little acknowledgement or understanding of that by the ministers responsible for this budget, which will undoubtedly affect pay services and therefore quality of care. This motion is clear on the issues it brings to council this evening. And whilst the words of this motion will, and understanding impact that this non-funded increase in cost will do to the sectors, this crisis is about real people. It's about an older person left waiting for care that doesn't come. Adults with disabilities losing vital support, a care worker having to leave a profession they love because they can't make ends meet, a person with debt who can no longer access the support of advisers, or a family with a young child in need whose day centre where they receive respite services will have to close. We need the government to wake up to the human costs of these policies, which directly impact their ability to implement strategies around supporting more people into work, health prevention, reducing wait lists and discharging people from overcrowded hospitals. The charitable and social care sectors, number one priority is always the people and communities they support. The burden of these huge increases in costs with little time to prepare means there is a need for many organisations to cut or reduce services, and the knock-on impact it will have on Watford residents, individuals and families living in our town and the communities and local economies who rely on this support will be devastating. I ask that we all support this motion to continue the pressure on the government to overturn this cruel and counterintuitive policy and deliver the promised and required funding to ensure the services we all rely on continue to deliver. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Penn. Councillor Ian, would you like to speak?
Thank you, Chair, I'm going to second and reserve my right to speak for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member have any amendments or want to speak?
Please.
I'm conscious of time, so I'll be really quick, but I just wanted to say that one of the great things about my role is that I get out in the community, and they're like you do, Chairwoman, and speak to lots and lots of charities. I would say that since this announcement, the first thing that is raised with me by charities every single time is about these changes. We've got brilliant charities in Watford, but it's easy to forget that actually a lot of them are in very precarious financial situation, that they're spending lots because there's lots of demand on their services, their incomes are constrained, they're not necessarily getting as much in grant funding, people are struggling to donate to them. And at a time like that, I mean, the national figure is one and a half billion pounds, to clobber charities in this way. Labour always claimed to be the, you know, progressive, compassionate, kind, caring party, they've chosen to respond to the financial challenges by hitting charities. And I really, I know that they're putting in measures to support other sectors, I cannot understand how they can ignore this and not support our charities, because the consequence of it will be them cutting back on provision, or some of them will just go bust, because they can't afford to continue. So I strongly support this, and it will affect Watford charities unless the government takes action.
Thank you, Mayor Peter. Constable Nigel?
Thank you, Chair, and obviously I do recognise there's a lot of tough times for charities. I did visit Watford Men cap the other week with Matt Mayne, the MP, and have had from other, heard from other charities. Just on the other side, there's a lot of talk about social care, which is very important, as mentioned obviously by Penny and in Jennifer's speech. The government is looking into, and quite rightly, Secretary of State for Health, Wes Streeting, is going to come back, and we are looking into social care with, that's obviously going to be something that's going to have to be done in this parliament. Obviously Baroness Casey is looking at the report, and that she should come back in the next six months, I think it is, I may have got that wrong. But we certainly are looking at social care and how many, you know, patients being released from hospital, that's something that is desperately needed to be done. And obviously that hasn't been, you couldn't be necessarily say we're going to do that straight away in the first six months, but that is certainly something to look at. Yeah, there's been lots of tough decisions, and I certainly sympathise with all those decisions, but as I say, we take note, and I certainly take note of a lot of the things that have been said tonight.
Thank you, Constable Nigel. Constable Jagtar, I'm going to let you speak, but can you just conduct yourself to obey, because we always ask you to put your hands up, but you always wait to wait after. Go ahead and speak, please.
Sorry, I have to answer to that. There's no end to debate that when you put your hand up on this. Listen, I want to respond to what Peter said. Peter, we had a thriving voluntary sector in Watford before the Lib Dems came in, and they slashed it, right? I can name you a few here, the Muslim Project, Racial Equality Council, Multicultural Community Centre. So don't stand up there as a Labour are cutting back the charities, yet you did the same, not you, when Dorothy came in, your party did the same. Thriving Community Centre were slashed, and people in the communities had nowhere to go, and they were struggling at that time. So it's all right to lecture here what the government's doing when your own councillor has done the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Constable Jagtar. Councillor Ian, would you like to speak?
Yeah, I will, thank you, Chair. I was actually thinking about keeping my remarks short, but now I'm going to go through my whole speech after that particular contribution. And thank you, councillor Bell, for your comments, but it's not actually sympathy that I want from yourselves, I want anger. This is not a Labour thing to do, and I'm going to take you through why. One of the first things this government did was to drop social care from its immediate commitments, despite it being in their manifesto. They've now chosen, you've just made reference to Baroness Casey looking into this, they're actually kicking the can down the road, they won't be implementing changes to at least 2028. But this motion is about employers' national insurance contributions, and in this, we have another example sadly of an ill-thought-out policy that impacts our most vulnerable residents from this new government. Why do I say another? Well, it's not that long since we were in this chamber again debating the changes to winter fuel allowance and the impact on those pensioners who are falling short of pension credit, who are still being set to have their winter fuel credits reduced. That was voted on by new Labour MPs and the new government without an impact assessment, and it seems to me that this employers' national insurance contributions changes, both threshold and amount, is equally ill-thought-through and equally poorly impact assessed. It's going to hit, as we've heard, care homes, respite centres and charities, every single charity in the charitable sector. Care is a vital part of the healthcare system, and that is equally and doubly important now that we're not going to be getting our new general hospital any time soon, another Labour decision affecting our town. Between the NIC changes, the threshold change and the minimum wage increase, that's also going to affect these sectors, what you're doing is effectively looking at sectors that employ those people, that employ people who are on the lowest wage, and you're hitting those businesses and those charities hardest. That is coming from an apparently Labour government. One of the reasons I'm so angry, and my colleagues are so angry, and the residents I meet are so angry, and the CEOs and employees at care centres and at charities are so angry is because this is the antithesis of what people would have expected your government to do. So I don't actually want sympathy, though it is welcome, I want anger from you on this I want anger from you on this change. I also want to make it clear, we have seen the government change their mind on this. Hospices were originally, as I understand it, exempt from this change, but since the pressure was put on the new government, they've now been given some protections and measures from these implementations. So there is a root to hope and a root to be proud only if you support motions like this and campaign right to your colleague who hasn't made it here tonight and encourage him to lobby the government on this. As I said, we've met many, many care providers across the town. Constable Patterson, as some of you may know, is CEO of a care home. This is an issue I'm passionate about. But we reached out to them because they needed someone to speak to, they felt like they weren't being heard. We have frankly met more people, as I understand it, than the local MP has managed to do, and it's taken a long time for them to hear from not just Labour members here in Watford, but right across the town in response to these changes. They need dialogue with their politicians over this and how they can make representation. So please, thank you so much for visiting Mencap, we visited them as well, but please do get out there and speak to people and hear the changes that these NIC contributions are going to be caused. The people I met are wonderful, but they are emotionally drained, they're physically exhausted, they're doing incredibly tough jobs. And now the changes that you're introducing are likely going to force those care sectors and charities to have to pull back services that are being offered in the midst of a cost-of-living crisis and the midst of a health and social care crisis. So let me just give you some quick numbers, they're in the motion. We expect adult social care cost increases to be over nine hundred million pounds, which wipes out any measly contributions made by government during their recent budget. And we expect to see, across all of the adult social care, one minute left, I understand, all of the social care...
Constable Ian?
One minute, I think. Two point eight billion pounds of increased costs. This is fundamentally unkind, fundamentally not Labour, and you should be helping us to oppose this change. The mayor's already mentioned all of the incredible organisations we have here in Watford, but it's also one point four billion pounds of increased costs on the third sector. So I really urge everyone here to vote in favour of this motion, and please write to your new Labour government and tell them, protect the most vulnerable, don't force cuts to their services. Thank you.
Thank you, Constable Ian. Constable Penn, would you like to sum up?
In the interest of privacy, I won't repeat anything that's already been said. But I do just want to say, obviously, this is on behalf of Jenny Pattinson. I know she's incredibly proud to be a Lib Dem because we do separate out social care from the NHS and point out that it should be wholly funded to make sure that we are looking after very vulnerable people. And I'm just going to end on something that Peter Taylor, I think, said at the last council meeting, which is that tough decisions are choices, and this is a choice that's being made and we should absolutely oppose it. So thank you.
Thank you, Constable Penn. We're now going to vote on this motion. All in favour? Anyone against? Any abstain? Thank you, it's been carried. We move on to the second motion. We'll turn it back. Okay, we're just going to move on to the second motion, SEND provisions. The next motion has been proposed by Constable Karen and second by Constable Mark W. Details are contained in the agenda. I now invite Constable Karen to move the motion.
Thank you, Chair. You all know I have a very deeply personal collection to this topic, but we're bringing it tonight because this is a really highly relevant issue. At the moment this week, the Education Select Committee is hearing representations on the current SEND crisis. We've had recent filibustering by the Tory group at Hertfordshire County Council of SEND-related motions, after Hertfordshire County Council was absolutely blasted by the CQC for its failures to provide for children and young people with SEND. The concern that this motion relates to is to do with the EHCP process. So that's the process to get an educational healthcare plan, which enables a child or young person to receive particular support, primarily to enable them to stay in an educational setting or to flourish in an educational setting. The process works by requiring a needs assessment, and then there will be, if that is granted, a review of the child's needs, then they will decide if they're going to give an EHCP. And then if they do give an EHCP, it may or may not be very well drafted. There are multiple points in the process where families come across obstacles, where they have to appeal the decision of the local authority. The reason this is such a problem is that in the previous academic year, on a national level, local authorities lost nearly ninety-nine percent of the cases brought against them by family for poor decision-making. For Hertfordshire, the figure in that year was ninety-four percent. Why are the figures so high? And if the local authorities know they're likely to lose the cases on appeal, why not just make the correct decision in the first place? Quite simply because needs assessments and EHCPs cost money. There's a well-identified pattern of behaviour by local authorities to decline needs assessments or to issue poorly drafted EHCPs to avoid or delay incurring costs. One commonly seen trend, which I have experienced personally, is the local authority refusing to undertake a needs assessment even when there is overwhelming evidence for a needs assessment for that child, only to concede their appeal at the eleventh hour before the tribunal hearing, or was, in my case, failing to submit any evidence to the tribunal whatsoever, leading to a de facto victory for the families, which just means a delay of absolutely months in even getting a needs assessment for no good reason. Local authorities do this knowing that they are kicking the can down the road in terms of doing something that they will almost always inevitably have to do anyway. And why do they do that? Quite simply because they cannot afford to meet the needs of SEND people. We've repeatedly discussed in this forum that we know that funding settlements for local government are highly inadequate, and the people who are slipping between the cracks as a result are the most vulnerable people in our society. While families are waiting for the outcome of tribunal processes, and I should say, in many areas, the waiting lists are now in excess of a year, children are unable to access the support they need to flourish in school or in some cases to even attend school. This has a severely damaging impact in many ways, and it's been noted in statistics that children with speech and language challenges who don't receive the right support are six to eleven times more likely to be behind at school, twice as likely to subsequently be unemployed and make up almost half of mental health service referrals. On that note, we must remember it's impossible to talk about the SEND crisis without also talking about the mental health crisis and vice versa. As an example, autistic adults with no learning disability are nine times more likely to die by suicide than the general population, and the life expectancy of autistic people is significantly lower than that of the general population, which has been attributed to the shockingly high suicide rate in the autistic community. This is relevant because if SEND provision were properly funded, there's every chance that mental health services would reap the rewards. What's less often talked about is the economic impact of failing to provide SEND services or invest in them. As I've already highlighted, people who have provided inadequate support in school have significant lower employment rates. We also know that the employment prospects of parents and carers are significantly affected, and there's overwhelming data to show that employment rates amongst parents who are carers to SEND children are significantly lower than those of their counterparts whose children don't have SEND. At the most basic level, if a child cannot attend school or cannot attend full-time because their needs are not being met or because a suitable school place is not available for them, and we have to see here the increase in homeschooling because of the lack of adequate school places, it means that parents cannot work. If we were to provide proper provision for SEND children to enable them to attend school, there'd be a significant uptick in the number of working parents, which in turn would have economic benefits in terms of local and national spending power, income tax and also national insurance contributions, which we know the government really cares about. But there's also an unacceptable burden placed on the taxpayer as a result of the misuse of the appeals process by local authorities. Organisations such as Special Needs Jungle and Pro Bono Economics have found that over the last decade, local authorities have cost the taxpayer in excess of half a billion pounds through the misuse of the SEND tribunal for a success rate of only four percent. So just to put that into local context, I think the recent hospital announcement suggested that Watford General would need one to do billion pounds in funding to be rebuilt. That means that the amounts that have been misused through the SEND appeals process would equate to approximately one quarter to one half of the cost of delivering a Watford General. There's a significant more that I could say on this topic, but I've limited time, so I'll leave you with this thought. If ninety-nine percent of people who appealed their criminal convictions were successful on appeal, it will be both a national and international scandal, and rightly so. Yet when it comes to local authority maladministration and unlawful behaviour, so few people realise that local authorities lose SEND appeals up to ninety-nine percent of the time. We need to be more vocal about this shocking behaviour by both Hertfordshire and other local authorities across the country, because the damage it's causing to children, families and wider society is quite simply a national scandal. Finally, I would also note that last year, a study funded by local authorities recommended scrapping the SEND tribunal, which was an absolutely shocking report. The simple fact is that rather than showing they're willing to change their reporting behaviours, local authorities are simply doubling down and wishing to remove the only means that families have of challenging local authorities to ensure that their children... As was brilliantly said in today's Education Select Committee, even if we dilute the rules, we won't dilute the needs. The simple fact is there are huge swathes of children who are being failed by a thoroughly broken system, and as a result, I ask you all to vote in favour of this motion tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Constable Karen. Constable Mark W., would you like to second?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman, I will choose to speak now. Tonight's motion and Karen's moving speech explaining just what it means to people at the sharp end of this may well have opened the eyes of many of you to the dreadful situation facing Hertfordshire families with children who have special educational needs. It's nothing short of heartbreaking. These families are fighting for something that their children desperately need, a quality education that is both accessible and appropriate. What they face instead is a system plagued by bureaucracy, delays, a crippling lack of resources and a national funding crisis that is pushing these families to the brink. There are two parts to this motion. The first addresses a dire situation in Hertfordshire. The second, the growing national crisis that demands immediate attention. For Hertfordshire, the focus is on the monumental struggle that families face just to get their children the education, health and care plan that they're legally entitled to. This plan is supposed to be the gateway to the right education environment for each child, the pathway that opens doors to the support they need to thrive. I would think it's in everyone's interest to get this done as early as possible so the council can plan and the children can begin their educational journey without further delay. Unfortunately, as you've heard just from Karen, the reality is far different. The process of securing an ADHCP is complex, requiring input from a number of professionals and services. But with Hertfordshire's system broken, overwhelmed by under-resourced staff, the shortage of speech and language therapists and educational psychologists, it's no surprise that only forty-five percent of education health plans are completed on time and a staggering seventy percent are substandard. Too many plans fail to meet the needs of the children they're meant to support, forcing families, if they can afford it, into a gruelling and expensive battle, a battle that too often ends in legal tribunal where more than ninety-five percent of appeals are won. Now on to the national crisis. Every local authority, including Hertfordshire, receives high needs funds based on the number of children with SEND. However, due to the outdated funding formula, Hertfordshire is the fourth worst funded authority in this country. If we were funded at the same level as Buckinghamshire, we'd have an extra forty million pounds this year to support these children. Instead, we're facing a twenty-eight million pound overspend, and if nothing changes, that figure was sought at two hundred and sixty-three million by twenty-two thousand and eight, twenty-two thousand and eight, twenty-two thousand and nine. This is just not sustainable. It's a ticking time bomb. Our country could be, or county, sorry, could be forced to issue a section 114 notice, just as others have already done, effectively declaring itself financially unviable. This is a national crisis. The government cannot continue to ignore the severe underfunding of SEND provision. We cannot let this situation spiral further out of control. That is why this motion addresses both the urgent need for reform in Hertfordshire's processes and the equally urgent need for the government to properly fund SEND at a national level. I urge you all to support this motion. Let's show our commitment to the families of Watford and across Hertfordshire that we hear their cries for help and that we will do everything in our power to ensure their children get the education they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Constable Mark. Does any member have any amendments? Anyone wish to speak? Go ahead, Constable.
Thank you, Chairwoman. Can I firstly start by thanking both of my colleagues who brought this very, very fundamentally important motion? I know that both of you are very passionate about this motion and special needs children education provision relating to that. I agree with everything that you've said in terms of some of the figures and the stats that you've given, and I have a very personal experience in relation to SEND and indeed the appeal process. Some of you may know my eldest son is actually autistic, and he's now sixteen years of age. And I went through this battle that both of these councillors have highlighted. But the difference was, I had a legal background and I had the resources. And despite that, for a period of eighteen months, I went through hell with the local authority, until the point that I went to the Court of Appeal where the SEND tribunal was held, and I represented my son, and we actually were successful at that hearing. And when the Hertfordshire professionals gave evidence before the tribunal judge, both of them turned around and said, we agree exactly what the parents are saying, that their child's needs are not being met at this school. However, we cannot say that on paper. We cannot say what we feel to support the parents because it's ultimately down to resources and funding issues, and essentially, if we did, in real terms, we would be out of a job. It was absolutely shocking, but I just relate that experience of mine as somebody who was reasonably well-informed, who went through the process. The local authority breached every statutory duty they could in regards to that, but I fought all the way. But that's me. There are vulnerable families in our town and across Hertfordshire. You may remember, a few years ago, there was an undercover investigation into Hertfordshire's provisions related to SEND, and they had effectively found officers at that department laughing when they were being told about the torment that the parents were going through in losing the appeals. It was absolutely shocking. Hertfordshire was named a few years ago. Fundamentally important, we need to do what we can to support these vulnerable families and these children who go through a horrendous period of time. Not only are these families dealing with the challenging behaviour of young children, and obviously they're not getting the support in school, but they're having the additional battle with the local authority, which is completely unnecessary. We really need to do something. I really thank again both my colleagues for highlighting this very fundamentally important issue. Thank you again.
Thank you. Constable Nigel?
Thank you, Chairwoman, and yeah, thanks for calling Constable Sahel, and I think a bit it's Wednesday trying to help you, you know, it's a long... But yeah, and obviously, on the Hertfordshire side, fully support everything, obviously what Constable Watkins has said and Constable Taylor, Lady Taylor, sorry, fully support all that. Obviously, you know, I've supported motions on, well, put forward motions on SEND myself. I was on the SEND scrutiny that Constable Watkins chaired, what was that, two years ago now, Mark? I don't remember now. So many things we've had, and so much of my casework is taken up with SEND issues. So no problem on the, as you say, it's in two parts, on the part on the county council, we'd fully support all that, and obviously, the mayor writes the man. Obviously, the only point, problem with us, as you can imagine, on the national thing is numbers three and four, you don't expect us, we can't obviously vote for the Liberal Democrat, those two bits there. But as I say, on the Hertfordshire one, if it was separate, we could certainly support that, because I fully agree with that, and I'm sure we'll have battles on that at the county budget coming up, and as we talked about SEND again today at the county budget scrutiny. But all the other stuff, yeah, we fully support, and we are saying, I mean, you say here, the mayor writes the Secretary of State for Education to urge her to implement an urgent, fully-funded financial plan, well, that's what we're hoping for. And I take on board what you say about the Children and Families Act 2014. Well, we do know that that is what is being looked at, but we're not, I mean, that will come in good time, but it's not going to be done straight away. So those two points, you know, I can't support you on because obviously that's your national policy, but certainly on the Hertfordshire one, if that was separate, we could certainly support that. But I'll leave it there, because everything else in there, obviously, we support, but I just can't support the Liberal Democrat policy there as such. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Constable Nigel.
Constable Penn? I just wanted to say thank you again to Karen and Mark for bringing this motion, and thank you to Sahel for sharing his personal experiences. I do come at this from a slightly different perspective, having spent the last eight years working in the education sector in the support staffing side. I just want to emphasise that by not getting this right, we are absolutely letting down every child who goes to school every day, who dearly needs this support. We're also letting down the schools and their staff who don't have the resources to actually support those students in the classroom, because that's what it comes down to. We're not supporting those children to access the education they so richly and rightly deserve, and we are putting more pressure on a school system that is already under immense pressure, both in terms of funding and staff being overstretched. It needs to work for both sides, and I think it's so important to get it right for these young people as they go into Watford. Thank you.
Thank you, Constable Penn. Constable Favour, you want to speak?
Yes, thank you. I want to thank you for bringing this motion, and also acknowledge what my colleague, Constable Sahel, I think we worked together on your son when I was in Hertfordshire. Unfortunately, the challenge with special education needs has been a chronic one over the years. Because of my job as a senior manager in CAMHS, this is what we deal with every day. But what I wanted to say is, it's okay for us to bring these motions to come forward, but it's going to take quite a bit of time and effort to bring SEND to where it should be. Apart from working in CAMHS myself, many of you know that I'm a foster parent, and I have gone through this battle myself with two of my foster boys. In fact, one of them is still waiting for ADD assessment for another three years. Who knows? Before they leave me, I'm hoping that I would have achieved that, and that would be a gift I would like to give them. I would like to give them. Having said that, I totally agree with the motion that something needs to be done, but I just want to add that it's a very chronic national problem. It's not just peculiar to Hertfordshire. Thank you.
Thank you. Consular Karen, would you like to exercise your right?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you to everybody for your contributions. I think just a couple of things I would say just to Labour colleagues. Please to also note that the Public Accounts Committee has acknowledged as well that this is a very serious national problem. That's a cross-party committee, and of course, Labour MPs have made very similar statements to those that I've made today and have acknowledged the need for change, whether that's a Lib Dem manifesto policy or whether that's something that's come up for PSC, there is actually a lot of overlap between what's being said there, so please, please do take that into account. I think the other thing I would just say is that I just really welcome this opportunity to share with you today, because parents like me, standing in a chamber, is a real rarity. We know there aren't that many SEND parents in elected positions. As I said with the employment statistics, it's just too difficult to balance, and I just feel it'd be really remiss of me not to stand here tonight and speak on their behalf because I am one of them, and there aren't many of us in this position. And we're so used to not having our voices heard, whether that's by officers or by elected representatives. Look at the filibustering that happened at County Hall last year. It was demeaning to all of us. Look at what happened in Warwickshire, where three councillors in their education committee behaved so appallingly and said such awful things that thousands of people complained, and they had to go through an investigation procedure, and two of the three no longer sit on the education committee as a result. SEND families are used to not having our voices heard, we're used to being disrespected by local authorities, we're used to, really sadly, people in elected positions not listening to us, or even as one of the Conservative councillors from Hartsmere said when the equivalent motion was debated there, "It's okay because the decisions are made in the interests of fairness. Look me in the eye and tell me it was fair that my child, who was excluded from school at the age of five, was deemed not to have adequate needs. Look me in the eye and tell me it's fair that I'm currently doing casework for a family whose ten-year-old is talking about suicide because his needs are not being met and he's been refused a needs assessment. It's not fair and it's not okay." And I would really, really urge everybody to talk with this motion irrespective of party policy. I would love to be a unified councillor on this, please, in the interests of SEND families. We really need a break, we're so tired, we're so exhausted for fighting, please, please support us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairwoman, can you just say, I mean, if you took, remove the three and four of this council believes, we have no problem in supporting it, you know, but we can't support the Liberal Democrat, but everything else, obviously we support, and especially the county best.
Slabeau, I need to move on. Thank you. Can we do a vote on this motion, please? Anyone in favour? Anyone against? Anyone abstain?
Yes.
You abstaining? The motion has been carried. I'll move on to the third motion, local government. Thank you. We are now moved on to the final motion this evening. It has been proposed by Mayor Taylor and seconded by Consular Aga. I'll now invite Mayor Peter Taylor to...
I'll give a speech at the end if that's okay, but I just want to say one thing following on as part of this speech. When the Liberal Democrats are in coalition with Labour, with the Conservatives, this council, Liberal Democrat criticised what the coalition were doing. We had the balls to say, actually, we don't agree with everything nationally, and I hope Labour councillors over there will have the guts, when Labour are doing things nationally they don't agree with, that they'll actually support it, and if they read a motion and agree with all aspects of it, they'll vote for it. We'll come on to this at the moment.
Thank you, Mayor. Consular Aga, would you like to second speak?
Thank you, Chairwoman. Dear colleagues and the members of the public, I speak in support of this motion which calls on the Labour government to listen carefully to the voices of residents, businesses and stakeholders across Watford in shaping the future of local governments and devolution reform. It's essential that any changes to the structure of the local government work with our communities, not against them. Watford Liberal Democrat believes that a proper consultation, processing is critical. It isn't enough to make sweeping decisions from the Westminster of imposing structures without truly understanding the unique needs and priorities of each area. Watford is a town which is rich in diversity and what works well for one community might not suit another. That's why we must consult with residents, businesses and elected representatives, gathering their input before deciding what best for each area. The reform cannot come at the expenses of local democracy, representation and accountability. It cannot ignore the distinctive, distinct identities and circumstances of communities like Watford. This town, and indeed the whole of county, deserves an appropriate that reflects the needs rather than a one-size-fits-all, one-big unitary council. We have heard so suggested that a single unitary council covering all of the Hertfordshire would streamline the services, but I ask, at what cost? Hertfordshire is a large and diverse county, and create a single unitary would risk centralising power and losing the local focus that residents value so deeply. A single, big unitary council would not be in the best interest of Watford residents, and I urge the government to take note of this council's strong beliefs that such a proposal does not serve our communities. We need local council to collaborate in shaping proposals that reflect the best interests of our residents. We must build any new arrangement on the foundation of evidence, consultation, and most importantly, support from the people we serve. Decision made for people must be made with the people. For Watford, the principle is especially crucial. As a vibrant, growing town with unique needs, our residents expect and deserve to have their voices heard. They want to know that the service they rely on will remain accessible, responsive and tolerant to their community. This motion reinforces a simple but important principle. Local government works best when it stays close to the people. Reform that ignores the views of residents will only lead to mistrust and alienation. Let us send a clear message to the government that Watford and Hertfordshire future must be shaped by those who live and work here. I urge you all to support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Consular Aga. Does anyone have any amendments to this motion? Would anyone like, have you got amendment? No, you just like to speak. Is anyone else who'd like to speak? Consular Mark. Paige, I see the hand. Glenn, thank you, and as well. Tim, did I see your hand up?
No.
Okay. Anyone else? I've got Mark H., Consular Nigel, Consular Glenn, Consular Ian, anyone I've missed?
No.
Right, it's on.
I saw use of the hand.
Thank you.
Thank you. Consular Mark, can you go ahead, please?
Okay, thank you. I have deep concerns regarding Labour government's plans to restructure local councils. Democracy is not just a system of governance, it is the beating heart of our society, ensures that every voice, no matter how small, has the opportunity to be heard. It is a system built on fairness, representation and the belief that decisions affecting our lives are best made by those who live them. This week, Channel Four released eye-opening research into the attitudes of Gen Z towards democracy. It highlights a concerning trend. Young people, the future custodians of our democratic institutions, are losing faith in this system. This should be a wake-up call for us all. If we do not defend democracy at every level, national, regional and local, we risk losing the trust and engagement of an entire generation. Right now, that trust is being tested by the government's proposed devolution plan. A plan that has sparked significant alarm across the country. Here in Hertfordshire, we see clear example of what's at stake, splitting the county into two blocks, east and west, or one super-unitary council. Scrapping councils like Watford Borough Council is not just a restructuring of local governance, it is a direct attack on the principles of democracy itself. Councils like Watford Borough Council are more than just administrative bodies, they are the lifeblood of our communities, they provide essential face-to-face support through town halls, they host public forums where residents can shape local decisions, and they foster a sense of belonging and pride through cherished community events, from swishing on the Christmas lights, fireworks displays, free children's play opportunities to free performances in our parks. Under this mayor rule system, Watford has been ranked the highest of the UK's one hundred largest urban areas by the UK, by the Vitality Index. This accolade speaks to the power of local democracy in action. Councils like Watford Borough Council have created thriving, vibrant community that delivers for its people, and it's not just about rankings or statistics. Watford celebrates its people and their contributions to the town through initiatives or the O'Dentie Awards. These awards are recognised and honour the incredible work of local residents. It is this sense of community, pride and civic engagement that demonstrates why local councils are indispensable. It does also take a moment to reflect in the vital role that councils play in our communities, a role that in 2025 is perhaps more important than ever, given the devastating cuts to police and social services. Councillors act as a voice for their ward, participating in council meetings and driving forward initiatives that improve quality of life. Practical examples of their work include the range of CCTVs being installed at antisocial behaviour or fighting hotspots, reporting abandoned cars, potholes, damaged street signage and representing residents, planning and licensing meetings, the list goes on and on. These are not small tasks, they're everyday, hands-on work that tackles local challenges and promotes positive change. For many residents, participating in local governance is already a challenge. Attending a Hertfordshire County Council meeting, for instance, is nearly possible for those balancing full-time jobs, family responsibilities and travel costs. The government's proposal would only make this worse, creating barriers that discourage participation and further entrench privilege. But perhaps most troubling of all is the lack of proper democratic mandate for these changes. This is not just about Hertfordshire Watford, it's about the very soul of our democracy. If we allow power to be centralised and local voices to be silenced, we risk what makes our nation a beacon of the democratic values. Please support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Consular Mark. Consular Nigel?
I've been very careful to read through this very clearly, and I can support this motion. It's not, it's not particularly, I think you mentioned about Lib Dem or whatever, but clearly, oh yeah, of course, if you hadn't put the Lib Dem business in the last one, very important, serious SEND one, and hadn't been political about it, we could all come together on that, but certainly, and I told you that last time, but, sorry. Tim, what was that? Are we going back to what you were like last year? Are we going to go through all that again? Yeah, well, I don't know, weren't you going to go to the Standards Committee about your comments, Tim?
Aga, guys...
On this, I overall support it. As I say, what Aga said in her speech was not obviously what's in the motion, and obviously I fully support though what's in the motion. And as Peter has put forward when the leaders of the districts, the ten districts, put forward their letter, obviously that included, you know, Labour council leaders plus Lib Dems and even Tory Roxborne, and I fully support what he says there. But I don't recognise a lot of what Consular Hoffman just said ironically in supporting the motion as well. It's not about if, say, Watford council does go at some stage, it doesn't mean to say we won't be represented, there'll be another forum, there will be, we'll still have councillors here, we just don't know what. We may have a Watford Town Council, we don't know yet, we'll have something here. And obviously, the whole point about writing the letter, or obviously to Richard Roberts originally, or the original meeting, was to say, no, we don't want a county-wide unitary, and I don't think that's not going to happen, right? We're pretty clear that's not going to happen. But all the other points about saying that you're writing to the government to make sure this proper talks about it and that we talk properly and we make sure that councillors work more collaboratively, to make sure that whatever we get, you know, is actually agreed and there's much more of a consensus, of course I agree with that, and that's what we're seeing. I think all of our different groups, Conservative, Labour, Liberal, are all talking nationally. Plans will come forward certainly in the next month or two, but it's not going to be just done just like that, there is going to be talks, we're waiting for more, but it's going to happen. I mean, I think almost certainly the districts are going to go, it's a question of what is replacing that, whether we have two or three unitaries and then a combined authority, you know, it could be something like that, but it's not a question of having no council representation or not being able to go to a local councillor and do the things that Consular Hoffman said councillors do now, that will all still be done, it's a question of what form of government we have in Watford and locally. There may not be a Watford council, it will be some sort of combined authority with more power, and there will be hopefully more funding, that's the hope for the thing we get, but as I say, I have no problem, and we have no problem in supporting this actual motion, the wording of this motion. Thank you, Chairwoman.
Thank you, Consular Nigel. Consular Glenn?
Thank you, Chairwoman, I'll keep it quick. I mean, what Nigel says is really important, and I'll follow on from that because the point is, we need to be really careful, the government needs to be really careful about how this is done. Everybody wants to see value for money for residents, we understand there will be a successor organisation, but local government has to be local, it has to be representative of local situations and needs. This is an incredible, sometimes slightly quirky country, and everywhere is different, and the local authority situation has to represent that, and there has to be a proper consultation that really represents it. I mean, if the government wants to devolve power to the community in Watford, then be my guest, because we have argued for ages to be in charge of our own roads, schools, social care and other things. We've done an excellent job looking after our own affairs as a town. The council's, you know, award-winning, we've been lauded by our peers in the recent peer review. The town has an incredibly strong identity and unity, and that's something we're all part of, officers, councillors and the whole community, and our residents most first and foremost. So what I want to say, the government has to listen not just to us, but to the voices of the people we and they are elected to serve. Railroading something through that, you know, ends up with a big amorphous unitary authority that represents all different places, not going to be right for this town and this area. You know, Watford's quite different from the rest of Hertfordshire, we're within the M25, we've got tube lines, we're very, very, very different, and this needs to really be considered properly and not rushed.
Glenn? Consular Ian?
I almost would have said word for word what Ben said, so I won't add anything else.
I'm just trying to understand a few things. Maybe I misunderstood what the motion is. In principle, I agree with consultations for democratic processes, but there's something I'm not quite sure about. In the motion D says that the Labour government announced local government reform in their English devolution white paper, and then it says this made it clear that the government will end the two-tier system of district and county councils across the country, replacing them with the unitary authority that have a minimum population of five hundred thousand residents. Then we go down and it says, a single unitary council covering all Hertfordshire county, it's not in the best interest of Hertfordshire residents due to the size and diversity of the county. So I'm kind of not quite sure what we're saying. Are we actually saying that, what the Labour government is saying that it wants five hundred population under a unitary, or are we saying we are not satisfied that we're going to have a single unitary covering the one-point-two-million across Hertfordshire? I happen to work in Tower Hamlets, and I understand and appreciate the beauty of devolution. So like you were saying, I would be very glad if we have full devolution to us, because where I work, even though I work in NHS, I have access to the council at my fingerprints if I want to do anything. I just call the Cabinet holder for children, for whatever I want to, and they give me the council chamber to hold my meetings with teachers across Tower Hamlet, I didn't need to go any other place. So I would love us to have that kind of system where parents are applying to school and, you know, children's care and social care is all within the same place and nobody's going that way and that way. But what I need to be, what we need to be clear about is, are we actually suggesting that Labour government is in... that Labour government is insisting that we're going to have a single authority on the 1.2? Or are we saying, in what we said in the other part, that the Labour government is suggesting that we could have a unitary authority that has about 500 residents? And that's what we need to be very clear, clear about, 500,000. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Peter, would you like to...
Yeah, thank you. I'm really happy to respond to councillor Fad's questions and the comments made by members more generally. The point about paragraph D is that it's just a statement of fact, that is what the white paper said. And the white paper said, going to get rid of two tiers, we're going to have unitaries, we're going to have mayors that sit above them in combined authorities and the minimum number of people are 500,000. They didn't give, specify a maximum. So the Conservative leadership of the county council looked at that white paper and said, well, great, I'll reach these criteria by having one council for the whole of Hertfordshire, 1.2 million people, the largest council in Europe, because obviously having big councils like Birmingham's works so well. So that was his suggestion. I do think Labour need to think really carefully, is the Labour government have said half a million people is the minimum side. They've then sort of given hints that actually maybe it won't be that, it'll be 300,000, it'll be 350,000. But the white paper that they published said 500,000 and a lot of existing councils, unitary councils, the vast majority of them are less than 500,000, including the London boroughs that are not too far from us. The other thing Nigel said, councillor Bell, that a county unitary is not going to happen. I wouldn't be so sure. I think we've got to be clear that that would reach, that would meet the government's criteria. The government haven't said it won't happen. Ultimately, the county council can put forward proposals and the government will assess them and make its own decision. I think from Watford council's perspective, as a resident, we've got to be thinking about what's best for our residents. Finally, the point that I think councillor Bell made earlier, said it's not being rushed. I'll point out, the white paper came out in December, by I think the ninth of January, so over the Christmas period, councils had to come back to specify if or not they wanted to be in phase one, it's a matter of weeks. We've now been told we've got to come forward with outline proposals, initial proposals by March. We've been told all of this will happen by 2028. It is being rushed and I think that the point is that we actually want to have genuine conversations with our residents and businesses about what's best for them. This timeline pushes against that, so I hope that we can all support the motion.
Thank you, Mayor Peter. We're going to vote on this motion, all who are in favour? Do I really need to answer anything? The motion has been carried. Thank you, everyone. This included the meeting and thank you for cooperating. We've just gone six minutes over, can clap yourself.